Tuesday, April 23rd, 2013. This is a special meeting for the Public Works Committee. I am Councilmember Joe Buscaeno, Chair of the Committee. I am joined by my colleague, Councilmember Mitch Englander, who will be joining us pursuant to Council Rule 74. Also like to welcome our future colleague, Councilmember-elect Mike Bonin from Council District, soon-to-be Councilmember of Council District 11. Thanks, Mike, for being here. We'll get to you in a minute. I've called this special meeting to discuss our broken streets. Los Angeles, as we know now, has the worst streets in the country. Nearly one-third of city streets are so badly damaged, the Bureau Street Services can no longer maintain them because low-cost, routine maintenance is not effective and reconstruction is too costly for a city facing a multimillion-dollar budget deficit. The price tag to fix these 8,700-lane miles of failed streets is a staggering $3 billion, and unfortunately, we're all paying for it. Our cars depreciate in value quicker, we get hit more repair bills, our tires wear out faster, and we burn through more gas by sitting in more traffic, as Councilmember Englander can attest to on this way over here. All of this adds up to $750 of maintenance fees that cost each year, and when you factor in lost time and productivity, it's $1,500 annually. In January, Councilmember Englander and I proposed a bond measure that would finance the reconstruction of all 8,700-lane miles of failed streets in a 10-year period. I've asked officials from the Bureau Street Services to come this evening and give us an overview of the entire problem and answer your questions. The city administrative officer and the chief legislative analyst have prepared a preliminary analysis of the bond measure, and I also invited them here this evening. They will both present their report. The report and all communication of this committee, of this issue, this matter, will be available online at lacouncilfile.com under CF number 13-1300-S1. Tonight's going to be an informational meeting only. Before giving instructions to city staff on how to proceed, we want to hear from you. Residents, neighborhood councils, business owners, all invited and encouraged to participate and weigh in. Following tonight's meeting, I will hold meetings in South Los Angeles and East Los Angeles to allow residents in those specific areas to share their questions, comments, and recommendations. Meeting, those meetings will also be posted on my website, as well as Councilmember Englander's website and the Bureau Street Services' website as well. The City of Los Angeles is no stranger to large infrastructure projects. A hundred years ago, the L.A. Aqueduct opened, which allowed a small town to grow in the second-largest city in the country. We've all risen to the occasion, and we'll do it again. And with that, I want to recognize Councilmember Englander for some opening remarks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and I really appreciate it. I particularly appreciate all you that have come out to speak on public comment, because that's really what this is about. And let me just tell you what I hope to get out of this process, is what I hope to get out of this is a dialogue of ideas and concerns. Certainly, I don't think there's a lot of people out there right now that say, "Yeah, I want to increase my fees or my taxes." That's certainly not why I ran for office. But this is an issue that, as the two newest council members and soon-to-be next newest council member, we're going to be senior members. Anyway, we'll talk about initiations later. But in any event, this is something we've inherited amongst other things, and we're looking for solutions. We're looking for, what are we going to do about it? What are we going to do to ensure that when we leave office, we can make sure that we left the city a better place than we found it? That our predecessors, our children and our grandchildren, aren't going to inherit this problem? And let me just frame that, if I could. Why are we here? How did we get here? How did we get to 8,700 miles of failed streets? Eighty-seven-hundred miles, as you'll hear from our director in a moment, and what that means in the scope of things, compared to the 28,000-lane miles we currently have in the City of Los Angeles. How did we get to such a huge backlog, a 60-year, $3-billion backlog? We didn't just wake up one day and that happened. There's been a lot of comments that have been made thus far, that the city has failed to fund appropriately, that the taxpayers can't pay anymore. It's just way too difficult, and just to keep going back to the well and asking for more money is throwing money at the problem. And how do we trust the city that they would even spend the money on the streets and it wouldn't go to other things? And those are all the things we're grappling with and we've looked at, and we'll discuss here tonight with you as well. What we're looking at is, what we've proposed is perhaps a general obligation bond, and then we've heard from others and a lot of feedback thus far of, really? Why just the property owners? What about the people that are driving on the streets? What about the other people that have helped create this problem? And so, those are all the things we're looking at. We're not wed to any one idea at all. We're not there. We're not even there that we're sure we're going to put us on a ballot, which ultimately would be up to the voters, not even us, to decide. So, right now, we know we've got an issue, and it's the elephant room. It's the biggest problem we've got facing the city in terms of infrastructure. It's the biggest problem we have on a day-to-day basis that we're approached with. Prior to running for city council, I was the chief of staff for my predecessor, and I will tell you that the number-one complaint and phone call we got consistently, there were certainly hot-button issues that come up, but the most consistent call that we got over that period of time is, "When are you going to pave my street? Why did you pave my neighbor's street and not mine?" That's what we get. And walking through a little bit of the history, which is critically important, understand how we got here, why we're here, and why it's so much money moving forward, is that over the last 60 years, from 1950 to 1990, the city didn't invest in repairing failed streets, really, for the most part at all, for many reasons. One, the funding revenue and the funding streams that were dedicated to that weren't anywhere near what they should have been. And I'll give an overview of the gas tax and Prop 1(c) funds that are now depleted and gone, and the fact that the gas tax was the big issue, where the gas tax money, if we all remember Sacramento, kept a lot of the gas tax money. You remember a lot of those fights for many years, we had to go and fight for that money back, which we're finally getting our portion of. By the way, our portion of gas tax money, so you understand it, is when the gas tax formula was passed about 40 years ago, it was a formula that was breaking down on the gallon of gas you pay, not the price, because a lot of people have suggested, "Well, the gas costs more now, $4, up to $5 sometimes, a gallon." Well, we actually, the gas tax that goes back towards infrastructure is actually per gallon, not per the dollar amount, and it comes out to around .36 cents a gallon. And the breakdown on that .36 cents is right off the top, as the federal government does, they take half, about 18 cents. The county and the state take the remaining portion and leave three cents on the table for the city. Actually, it's a little less, it's 2.98 cents per gallon. It's been that formula for decades. Now, with that, the city also didn't have an inventory and no way to measure the actual conditions of the streets for years. They actually didn't create systems and technology, which our director will get into and talk about, micropaving and all this fancy technology and what we do to actually measure streets and what we used to do, which is fascinating and mildly interesting in some respect, because we just didn't really have the inventory and we didn't know the condition of every single street citywide, all 28,000-lane miles. So, we've had this depleting revenue stream, growing infrastructure and aging, and Prop 1(c) funds, which we were also getting, are now gone as well. And the ARA funds, which we were getting from the federal government, those are gone also, which is what has enabled us to fully fund the maintenance level and not the failed streets. So, categorically, we have three sets of streets for the most part. It's really broken down into five, but to simplify it, you have good streets that can be maintained with the basic slurry seal, which our director will get into, and the cost of maintenance. You've got a repair, and you've got a full reconstruct, in essence. So, those three, which are dramatically different in price, dramatically different in price to repair, is what we're dealt with. That 8,700 miles, roughly 31% of failed streets of the entire city system, is what we're talking about, the $3 billion. So, the city, 20 years ago, studied this and said, "What are we going to do?" And 20 years ago, they put a price tag on it, and the price tag was $700 million, and they said, "There's no way, it's not palatable, the voters will never go for it, forget about it." 10 years ago, they updated that under the previous general manager, at the time, Bill Robertson, and that update of the streets, which was entirely different, because they did have a new true inventory, which is now online, and you can view the condition of each and every street in every single community citywide. That, they went out and explored, and it was going to cost $1.5 billion to repair all the streets in the backlog 10 years ago. Didn't make it to the ballot, in fact, it didn't even make it to the council floor for a discussion. It came up in Public Works, but there were competing initiatives. If you remember Measure H and Measure G, it was the housing tax, it was the gang tax, and all these other initiatives that didn't even pass, but then this didn't make it there because there was no political will for the discussion. So, here we are 10 years later, and it's doubled in price yet again. So, every 10 years, in essence, it's doubled in price. So, now we have a $3-billion backlog and growing about $1 billion, $1 billion and a half dollars every three years from here on out. With that, we've got to do something. This is the first bond in talking to Mr. Buscaeno that we can come up with, where there's actually a direct return on investment to each and every person that's actually going to be paying for it, no matter what type of formula we come up with, whether it's a hybrid of sales tax or DMV charges, or however we come up with some kind of plan to deal with this, we've got to deal with it, because it continues to grow. And as our chairman said in the opening, it's costing each one of us that have a car, on average, $750 in routine maintenance, that's brakes, tires, rotors, drums, alignments, every single year. It's the highest price of maintenance of a vehicle of any city in the country. And so, you understand the baseline of that, the average is about $350 a year. Ours is $750, on average, per vehicle, not per household, just in maintenance. The return on investment directly would be in the form of savings and maintenance, not to mention all the environmental benefits, not to mention less accidents, faster emergency response times, fixing all the crosswalks, the right-hand turn lanes, and the reengineering of intersections, the appreciation in your own property value, and it goes on and on. So, we're looking at, and the idea of this is, we put this out there, quickly pulled it back, so we can get input from the stakeholders, from the residents, from the neighborhood councils and the businesses, to say, "What do you guys think we should do? And how should we plan? And what do we want the city to be 10 years from now? 20 years from now? 30 years from now?" Because we know we have this problem. We can point fingers all day long. And so, I applaud the chairman for moving forward. This isn't the sexiest issue in the world. Nobody wants to go out there and promote any types of increases, certainly in this day and age, while we're still in a recession, from my perspective. There's still high unemployment, and people are underpaid and overworked. It's very difficult. So, we're trying to do the best we can with what we've been dealt and want to hear your input and concerns. With that, I can't thank you enough for having these meetings and taking the leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Thanks for your partnership in this. Next up, I want to bring Councilmember-elect Mike Bonin to the mic. And, Mike, and this is our first time, or at least my first time, Mitch, to recognize your win, and this community's in good hands, Mike. We're so proud of you, and we're looking forward to working with you. Congratulations. And with that, I'll turn it over to you to say a few words.
If I have to wear a tie, the deal is off. That's one of my conditions. Thanks for coming here tonight. Welcome to the 11th District. Welcome to the West L.A. Municipal Building. It's a very beautiful building. It was designed, I think, by someone that Khrushchev was punishing for lack of imagination and creativity. I'm also glad that you got a chance to experience the West Side traffic today. It is legendary. It is always bad. It is worse right now because of the construction of what I think is actually a foolish project, the widening of the 405. If you found that traffic frustrating tonight, I hope you will spend a few minutes to reflect on that before you cast your vote on the LAX specific plan amendment study on the 30th, because there is an opportunity, if you follow Law's recommendation, to create the same sort of Carmageddon down by the airport. So, just take advantage of the opportunity to underscore that one tonight. Thank you for your leadership on this proposal. Councilman Englander said that there's not a lot of people who are willing to go out there and sell a tax increase to the voters at this time. And, one, I appreciate that you have been willing to do that, that you've been pushing the envelope on this issue, and that you've been trying to do the right thing by the city. I'm still new enough and naive enough to be willing to be a kamikaze pilot on this, and as I've told you both individually, I am with you on this, and I want to see a proposal that works move forward. I think that we have, for too long, been neglecting the foundation of this home, and it's crumbling, and as Councilman Englander pointed out, it's going to get more expensive and worse every year, and we absolutely need to deal with it. There is no way to cut fat or waste fraud and abuse our way into fixing the chronic backlog of repaired streets. It's just not going to happen. And I am happy to help push and shape and shepherd this. You guys may have more seniority, but I think you could actually list our names alphabetically, and that would be fine by me. But I hope tonight that you listen to some of the voices of the folks on the West Side as they talk about this, because there is, I have been hearing, I was asked about this issue quite frequently on the campaign trail, and I told folks where I stood on it, and I got a fair amount of pushback, not as much as I got on the sales tax, but there's a lot of concern and skepticism about this proposal. I don't think you will find anybody on the West Side who thinks that our streets are in a good condition, and I don't think you'll find anybody who doesn't think we need to take some pretty significant measures to get them fixed. But there's two separate issues for folks that I have heard from, and I think you'll hear some of that echoed tonight. One is a lack of trust in the city and its fiscal stewardship, and hopefully, we'll be able to help turn that around in the coming months. The second is the particulars of the proposal. I think folks here are somewhat keenly aware that the 11th and the 5th District tend to be the places where the most voters turn out in these elections, and the support from the 11th and the 5th will be crucial in getting something passed. The comments I have heard from people on the West Side is that there are things that they would like to see included in the bond measure, that would make it stronger and make them more likely to support it. From many members of the environmental community, I have heard that they would like us to consider provisions to use more reflective materials in how we pave, so that the heat is reflected, so that we do not create, continue to create tremendous heat islands in Los Angeles that drive climate change and increase our air conditioning costs. It would actually be far more beneficial and cost savings for the San Fernando Valley, for instance, where air conditioning costs are a lot higher. I have heard from folks here that if we are going to do this, they would very much prefer that we include our, at least some of our alleys in the bond proposal. The alleys in this part of town are absolutely horrible. I have also heard from folks that they are concerned that the city does not do a sufficient job in recapturing from developers or from construction companies the damage that is inflicted upon our streets, and that if the bond measure were to include stricter provisions to recoup street damage restoration fees, and to make sure that street damage restoration fees did not just go into the general fund and disappear, but be used to repair the streets in heavily-developed neighborhoods, such as the West Side, that would make it more palatable to this community. I've also heard from the cycling community that we're going to be building out a bicycle master plan, and this would be an opportunity to help build some of the amenities that make it work for everybody. I think you'll hear a lot more from various different people. I'm happy to champion and voice a lot of those concerns. Those are the ones I've heard most frequently. Those are some of the things I hope that we can work on to get in there. But again, I firmly believe we need to get something in front of the voters, and I'm happy to go out there, if it's the right measure, and campaign heavily for it.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Thank you so much. Before we move on to the agenda, I want to recognize Public Works Commissioner Gerald Mendoza-Lopez, who's here. Thank you so much for being here, Commissioner. Also, please be sure, and again, this is why we came out, that we want to hear your comments, your concerns about this proposal. So, if you haven't done so, you'd like to speak, please be sure to fill out a public comment card and get it over to Officer Duarte here in the front. With that, Michael, if you can please, we're going to take Items 1 and 2 together, if you can read those two items, please.
Okay. Item number one is a verbal report from the Bureau of Street Services relative to the condition of city streets, street repair and maintenance and future capital improvements. Item number two is a joint report from the city administrative officer and the chief legislative analyst relative to the Los Angeles emergency local street safety and traffic improvement measure as initiated by the motion from councilmembers Buscaeno and Councilmember Englander.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So, we'll first hear from Mr. Salceda, then followed by the combined report from the CAO and the CLA's office. So, Nazario Salceda, Director of the Bureau of Street Services, please, thank you for being here again and for your continued commitment to educating the public on this bond and in moving forward with it.
Thank you very much. First and foremost, I want to thank you both, Councilmember Buscaeno and Englander, for your incessant, your constant support and leadership on all matters related to public works. Specifically, I want to thank you for bringing this critical issue, street issue, to light. And thirdly, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to share with the public the monumental efforts that the Bureau of Street Services performs every single day to maintain the largest and most congested municipal street system in the world. So, with that, let me start by saying that L.A. is without a doubt the largest municipality in the nation in terms of square miles. In terms of geographic area, there is no other city in our country that is as big as L.A. L.A. is comprised of approximately 475 square miles. Well, how big is that? Well, the cities of Milwaukee, San Francisco, Minneapolis, Pittsburgh, Boston, St. Louis, Cleveland, and Manhattan fit within the geographic area of the city of L.A. That's how big we are. Needless to say, needless to say, we're big in terms of geographic area, but in terms of public works infrastructure, we're also the largest city, and there's no other city that has more lines of sewers, more streetlights than L.A., more sidewalk. Did I say sidewalks already? I didn't mean the word sidewalk. No, just kidding. Sidewalk, and of course, no other city has more streets than the city of L.A. How big is our street network? Our street network is comprised of approximately 6,500 centerline miles of streets or 28,000 lane miles of streets. Okay, here's the difference. If you measure Santa Monica Boulevard, if you measure one mile on the center of the street, thus one mile, one centerline mile of streets. But if Santa Monica Boulevard has six lanes, that same segment is equivalent to six lane miles of street. I'm sure the term makes sense now. We have 28,000 lane miles of streets. Well, how big is that, Nazario? I don't have an idea of how much 28,000 lane miles are. Well, 28,000 lane miles of streets are equivalent to a 10-lane freeway between the cities of New York and Los Angeles. Our street network is equivalent to a four-lane freeway between L.A. and Paris, France. And with our street network, we can go around Planet Earth 1.16 times. Think about the size, the magnitude of our street network. We also have the largest alley. I mentioned, I heard future Councilman Mike Bonin talking about alleys. We have approximately 800 centerline miles of alleys. We have more alleys in L.A. than the entire street network in the city of Oakland, California. Just think about that. Now, the city was never, was not always this big. Let's be, let's slow down for a second. Prior to 1945, the city had approximately 2,500 centerline miles of streets, primarily in the metropolitan area. It was after the war when the city grew in geometric proportions, I should say, in exponential proportions. We went from 2,500 centerline miles of streets to 6,500 centerline miles of streets in a matter of a decade. The valley, of course, grew in geometric proportions, but at that time, the city of L.A. did not have an inventory of streets. We didn't know how much we were growing. We didn't know how many city blocks do we have. We have right now, in the city of L.A., approximately 70,000 city blocks. But it was until 1982, when for the first time, the Bureau of Street Services put together the first comprehensive inventory of streets. Back in those days, we were using a very subjective methodology to rate streets. We would put together a team of two people, they would go out and rate the streets. What do you think, Mike? Ah, that's a negative for me. What do you think? To me, it's a seven. Okay, seven and a half. It was not very scientific, but it was a good way to at least rate the condition of the streets. It was in 1998 when we decided to adopt a scientific, state-of-the-art pavement management system. And at that time, we decided to adopt what is considered the state-of-the-art pavement management system and the elite pavement management system in the world, Micropaver. At that time, the Bureau of Street Services purchased the equipment and the technology to rate every single block of the streets, of the city network, every single block, by analyzing the stresses. Basically, what we have is a state-of-the-art van that patrols every single block, every one of the 70,000 city blocks in the city of L.A., and takes digital images, high-definition images of the surface of the pavement. Specialized staff will analyze those images and determine what type of distresses are we capturing, you know, on the surface of the street. That's how we predict the future condition of the streets, and that's how we come up with what is called the Pavement Condition Index. The Pavement Condition Index is the rate that is accepted internationally to grade a pavement. A pavement can be rated from 0 to 100, 100 being, of course, a brand-new pavement, and 0 being a completely failed pavement. Councilmember Englander mentioned that streets are subdivided into five categories: good, satisfactory, fair, poor, and failed. As a result of adopting Micropaver in 1998, the Bureau of Street Services decided to release every three years a document, a study, that is called "The State of the Streets." In 2005, we released our first study. At that time, we determined that in order to improve the condition of the street network and to put it at the optimum condition, we needed $1.5 billion, and that's with a B, billion dollars. In 2008, when we released the 2008 version of "The State of the Streets," we determined that at that time, the city needed $2.85 billion to take the condition of the streets from where it was to where we wanted it to be. Most recently, in November of 2011, the Bureau of Street Services released the 2011 version of "The State of the Streets." And in this report, we concluded that 21% of the street network is in A condition, meaning in good condition. 23% is in satisfactory condition, meaning in B condition. 18% of the streets are in fair condition, meaning C condition. And 31% of the street network, that is 8,700 lane miles of our street network, are in D, meaning poor, or F condition, meaning failed condition. So, our challenge right now is, you know, how do we fix the conditions that are in near failed or failed condition? That is 8,700 lane miles of streets. Typically, you know, when I make these presentations, I go to neighborhood council meetings every other night, they ask me these questions. So, who's responsible for this, Nazario? Are you responsible for this? I was born in 19, well, I'm not going to say it, but I'm over 50. But I was not alive in the 1940s, in the 1945, '45s. So, the reality is that as the city grew, we did very little to address the needs of the network. Since 1945 until 1986, we were paving 55 miles of streets per year. Think about that. I told you that the street network is comprised of 6,500 centerline miles of streets, and we were only resurfacing 50 a year. So, if you divide 6,500 by 50, we were paving streets once every 130 years. Streets don't last 130 years. So, obviously, our backlog grew in geometric proportions. Most recently, I mean, in the last eight years, we have invested historical number of, historical dollars. We are, right now, on our way to complete 800 miles of pavement preservation. Never in the history of the city of Los Angeles, we had those numbers. As a matter of fact, I get calls from my colleagues all over the world, and to them, it's beyond their comprehension that we're doing 800 miles of pavement preservation work. So, again, this is not our fault. We did work. So, again, this is not our, our fault. We did not, we simply inherited a street network that aged with very little or no maintenance. But I always say that we cannot blame our grandparents, although it's, we could say it, we could blame it, you know, we could blame everything on them. But I don't feel comfortable blaming everything on them because they didn't have the technology that we have today. They didn't have the knowledge that we have today. Pavement management was not a science back in those days. So they did the best they could. I want to think, I want to give them the benefit of the doubt, and I want to think that they did the best they could. But today, we have the knowledge, we have the technology, and we know what's the condition today and what's going to happen with our network if we don't take action quickly. So this is why I invest a lot of time in going to neighborhood councils to try to make you understand that we need to do something about the street network. Our strategy right now with the funding that we get is basically to save streets, save the A, B, and C's from deteriorating more. We invest very little on DNFs. Only 145 miles, only 145 lane miles per year are dedicated to DNF. Remember, we have 8,700 total of DNFs. If we only do 145 per year, we have a backlog of 60 years. So the reality is, our challenge is, how do we, you know, address the Ds and Fs? That is the biggest challenge that we have right now.
Let me ask you, on the DNF streets, does slurry seal or resurfacing, do they work on those failed streets?
No, that is an excellent question. Slurry sealing is an application that we use to preserve streets that are in good or fair condition. Basically, slurry sealing is an application of an eighth of an inch. People think that is paint. No, it's not paint. It's an emulsion, a rubberized emulsion that seals the surface of the pavement and stops water from infiltrating, you know, to the base of the, of the structure. Because we know very well that once the water infiltrates, it weakens the base and subsequently creates a failure on the structure. So no, slurry sealing cannot be used on a street that already failed because the structural damage is already there.
And what's the cost per mile on slurry seal? And compare that to reconstruction?
For slurry sealing, the cost per mile varies, and it goes from approximately $25,000 per mile to $30,000 per mile. If you do the next level of maintenance, which is resurfacing, now the price per mile goes to between $350,000 per mile to $450,000 per mile. And if you want to reconstruct a street, we need to invest approximately between $650,000 per mile and $750,000 per mile. That's why it is very critical for us that we save streets from deteriorating more. Because right now, we're investing pennies instead of investing a lot of dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Salceda. Ms. Englander, questions?
No, I want to hear from the public.
Thank you so much for that comprehensive report. I'd like to call up the CLA's office, CAO's office as well, for their report. I believe we have Paul Smith here and David Horano. A brief remarks, then I have a few questions. Then after this presentation, we'll hear from the public.
Good evening. Paul Smith.
Thank you, Paul, for being here.
CLA's office.
Can you up his mic level?
At your committee's request and the motion you introduced, we had prepared a joint report. We're looking at the proposal that you're offering on the general obligation bond, $3 billion, 10 years, $300 million a year, 8,700 lane miles of reconstruction and resurfacing. We also looked at a number of options which we could use to do this other than the general obligation bond. But I think we came to the conclusion very soon that the, the most optimal viable option available to the city would be the use of the general obligation bond. It has, it's, it gives the city the best credit to its investors. It's a safe, secure way of doing it. It has lower interest rates. It's a simplified bond measure, and we can structure it in such a way as to provide a low-cost way of moving forward on the reconstruction, or whatever, how you ultimately fabric, construct the, the program itself. This program really has three, it's a three-legged stool. One is the pavement preservation program. One is the, the actual bond measure itself. And then we also have the, the monies we're taking out of, of the, excuse me, we're taking out of the, it's the money we're taking out of repairing bulkheads, taking out of retain wall, retaining walls. These are all parts of the program. If, if we don't have the opportunity to move forward using general revenue funds to support the preservation program, we need to look at that. We also need to look at how we're going to structure the geo-bond itself. And then we, we need to look how we're going to backfill or, or fund those programs that we already use in conjunction with the, with the program.
So it's my understanding, the reason, the only reason we can use, proceed if, if voter-approved general obligation bond is because we already have an inventory of a pro, a specific problem. Is that true?
No, I think we're saying is the, the general obligation bond is, is a method by which we can add a, a reliable source of funding that the investment community knows about, that is backed by a levy against the property tax. It's, it can be structured in such a way that makes sense to the city and to the investment community.
Natalie, I know we've been on a number of conference calls on, on this issue, leading up to the, these series of, of meetings. What is your experience with general obligation bonds, and how will it benefit the city of Los Angeles? Or does it benefit the city of Los Angeles?
Natalie Brill, with the City Administrative Officer. There are lots of different ways to fund streets, and general obligation bonds tend to be the most secure for the city because it is backed by, basically, an assessment on property. So if you own an average home in LA, which is now about $350,000, you would pay a year, the most you would ever pay in a year, in, in the 29 years of the bomb, would be $121 for the year. And the reason you use general obligation bonds is because it's the cheapest debt that the city can borrow. Why do you borrow for streets? Well, you borrow for streets because streets last X amount of years, you know, 25 years, 30 years, Nazario will tell you. So you're spreading the cost of that street over time. That's why the city, a city would borrow money for infrastructure. Because you don't want the people today to pay for the streets that are going to be used in 25 years, like our sewer system. The, the reason that you do this over any other type of tax is because it is less expensive. You know, people have asked us, so why don't you do a general assessment for the entire city? Why don't you do some type of, you know, sales tax, like the county did for their Measure R? Because this is really the least expensive way for a city to do infrastructure. The other thing about general obligation bonds is it can only be used for infrastructure. You know, a lot of people are concerned about that the city will not keep the money on its own. By law, the city has to separate the money. So if you're using the money for streets, that's what the voters vote on, that's all you can use it for.
So very similar to the police stations, the libraries, the fire stations that we build, and also, you're also looking at a citizen oversight committee as well on all these funds are being.
Correct. Currently, all of our propositions for general obligation bonds have both an administrative oversight that reports to the mayor and council, and a citizen oversight committee. And those are chosen from the communities that have interest in that area. For example, on Proposition O, which is the stormwater, you know, there's somebody from the environmental community, there's somebody, you know, from the city, somebody from, you know, architect, an engineer, people who are interested in that type of citizen oversight committee. So, you know, there is a lot of oversight on those bonds. And also, general obligation bonds, because you issue them over time, you can control how much you spend every year. So the way that Paul was describing that we would, that we would do this bond issue is that we would, you know, issue, that the authority to issue would be $3 billion over 10 years, right? So you would issue $300 million a year, and then the department would, you know, go through its DNF streets and reconstruct. And the reason you're reconstruction, reconstructing or resurfacing is because it's true infrastructure. Slurry seal and filling potholes isn't really infrastructure. It's repair, it's maintenance, right? So that's why you want to do, you know, reconstruction of streets. And then those bonds we paid over 29, 30 years.
Ms. Englander?
Yeah, you made a point that at the highest point of repayment is one particular year is about $10 a month, is what you said, for the average. Angelino.
Let me see if I got that right. The property owner pays an average of approximately $121 over the life of the bonds. So the amount paid over years would get progressively higher, and then as the bonds are paid off, it goes down again.
So at what year is the highest? What, what?
The 10th year.
The 10th year. And it's a 10-year program. So, and, and the work program is a 10-year program?
10-year program, payback is, I believe, 29 years.
Right. 20-year bond, so each year we, it's a 20-year bond with a 29-year payback. Got it. So, so with that, the, the highest one-year payment that you would have, the apex, would be at year 10.
Correct.
That's when you would have the full benefit of the full program as well? Because that's when the program would be complete.
Yeah, so at the end of the 10th year, right, you would have, you would have reconstructed all your DNFs. And hopefully, by that time, too, you have, you know, the pavement, what's it called? Payment Preservation Program?
Preservation Program.
That would help keep those streets at an A, B, or C, right? So you don't degrade even more. So that's what Paul was talking about, the three, you know, the three legs of your stool is, you know, the bond issue, you know, general fund money, and then the, yeah, the, the capital improvement program. So those three together would maintain all your streets at A, B, and C.
So Mitch and I, we've heard over the series of the last couple months from a number of neighborhood council members, business owners, residents, that we already pay enough taxes. Why isn't the, the money that we're already paying provide for the fixing of our streets? Do we, do we have the city, does the city have the capability of funding $3 billion of every, fixing every failed street in the city?
No, but the general fund itself is, I believe, I think, what, $4 billion, $4.5 billion a year? That's what we collect in general fund taxes. So if you're talking about a $3 billion program, you, you really couldn't do anything else. And I think what's unique about the city of LA is that we are so spread out. We're the largest city land-wise, like Nazario was saying. So no other city deals with this issue of, you know, having streets all the way, you know, as north as you can get, all the way down to San Pedro. I mean, it's really a very large city. So how else do you do infrastructure? It's the same reason the voters approved, for example, the wastewater program. That's also a $3 billion bond issue. You know, voters don't know that because it was approved in '84. You know, so that was the last time we did a program this. But what does that do? It maintains your sewer system. So when you, when you flush, you have a good sewer system.
Lay it out.
You know, and we've been paying that off now over the last, you know, 30, almost 30 years now. And that's the reason you do that, is because those last, you know, 50 years, and your streets last 25 to 30 years. So that infrastructure lasts for a long time. The general obligation program, you know, at the last meeting, we heard a lot, well, why are the property owners paying for it? Well, it's very difficult in California to tax ourselves. After Proposition 13, it was very difficult for the city to tax. To create a tax, to tax everybody, you have to attach it to something, right? So what do you attach it to? You know, we're not the state, we're not the federal government. We just can't say, okay, we're going to add 2 cents to your gasoline. We can't do that. We don't have the authority by state law to do that. So the best way to fund big capital infrastructure is through the general fund program.
So the mayor released his budget yesterday, and can you briefly summarize the pavement preservation plan contained in his budget and how he plans on funding it?
Hi, Stacy Sosa of the CAO. The mayor's proposed budget funds an 800 centerline-mile pavement preservation program, which is a little different from the way you've been speaking of miles here. It includes 245 miles resurfacing reconstruction, 455 miles of slurry seal, 100 miles of cracked sealing, and 350,000 small asphalt repairs. This continues the same level of program that we have in fiscal year 1213. The way this program is being funded next year is through special gas tax, Proposition C, a small amount of street damage restoration fee, Measure R, Traffic Safety Fund, and the General Fund. One of the challenges with the 1314 budget is that the Proposition 1B funding, the final drawdown's complete, and this is the last year that there, we're programming those funds. So it's been a challenge to fill the hole that's been left behind with the Prop B1, Prop 1B funding. So in order to continue the 800-mile program, they've had to replace that with the General Fund and primarily Measure R funding.
Talk about Measure R. I know voter-approved Measure R, I know, how, I mean, we, we've talked about the local return on Measure R. And this is another question that we get. It's like, didn't we approve Measure R? Is Measure R fund going to our D in failed streets?
I might have to defer to David on that.
Hi, I'm David Horano from the Office of the CAO. Measure R was approved to fund a variety of transportation projects. Mostly of them, most of the projects that are being funded are regional projects in nature, and there is a local return component. The regional projects that you might be familiar with are the Regional Connector, the Subway to the Sea, the Green Line Extension. Those are, Subway to, I'm sorry, where?
To the VA.
Okay, to the VA, thank you. Stand corrected. But that was the major purpose of Measure R. In our local return dollars that we get back, we get about $40 million a year to the city to use for transportation purposes. The pavement preservation program alone, as Stacy just testified, is in excess of $130 million a year. And that's just taking care of the A, Bs, and Cs.
Right, that's maintenance.
Just trying to keep them from falling into the Ds and Fs. That's not even really addressing any of the Ds and Fs. And that, that really is stretched to its max in trying to do that, along with gas tax and the other.
David, I had one last question, and then I'll turn it over to my colleague. Last, last week in the valley, we heard a neighborhood council member suggest that we use our state license fees to pay for this $3 billion prod, problem. Is this feasible, and how can the council go about, if it is feasible, or is it feasible? If so, how can the council go about looking at this option or this idea?
Well, I think, you know, your CLA drafted a memo on the subject, so I'll let Paul.
Great, thanks, Paul.
At your request, we did draft you a memo on the subject. In, this is, this is about AB 83 of Hancock was created, was enacted in 2009, authorizing counties to levy up to $10 per vehicle for a fee subject to voter approval to fund transportation projects and programs. In 2010, five Bay Area counties approved a, a $10 registration fee for a range of transportation programs, some of which allocated, were allocated to local jurisdictions for road repair programs. Specific expenditure plans were subject to the ballot measure. In other words, the plan itself, how those funds are going to be allocated, were part of the ballot measure. The Los Angeles Board of Supervisors has shown no interest in placing a vehicle registration on the ballot. In the absence of a ballot proposal containing the plan of how the money would be allocated, it is very difficult to, to generate a number about how much money would be generated for the city of LA through this $10 fee for street repairs. So we don't see much hope of that happening. I don't think any other jurisdiction, except for the counties around the Bay Area, that actually went forward. They range from road repair and to actually pass within a, with a, within a city park or a park in their area. So it had broad application. It was split, basically, between the counties and the jurisdiction. There were a number of different types of programs or activities that it funded.
Thank you, Paul, for that report. I'll turn it over to my colleague.
Councilmember, on that note.
Yes, David.
I might add that if you don't specifically identify the projects and the costs associated with something like that, we would potentially have a Proposition 26 issue, given that that mechanism is a fee instead of a tax or, so it would have, it would, it would definitely have to be approved by a majority of the voters in order to, to avoid any kind of problems.
have to be approved by a majority of the voters in order to avoid any kind of problems.
Got it.
Also, if you would allow me, I wanted to point out, in our report, we've identified the one hundred and twenty-one dollars. If you break that down, the council member said about ten dollars a month. It's about thirty-three cents a day.
And that's based on a property value of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right?
Average property value of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And based on the council member's comments of the maintenance of, average maintenance being about seven hundred and fifty dollars a year, you would generally expect that you would be able to make that back fairly quickly and reduce maintenance costs to your vehicles. The other thing I wanted to also point out is there's always been some concern about how real is the oversight over some of the general obligation bond programs?
Yeah.
I deal on a daily basis with Proposition O and the administrative oversight and citizens' oversight. And the citizens' oversight function is very real. We deal with them on a weekly basis. They ask real questions. Their opinions and their votes matter a lot when it comes to the program. And they're, they are given a tremendous amount of respect within City Hall.
I can truly attest to that. I saw a brand-new police station being built out at the harbor that we benefited from. We never, we never thought it'd happen so quick.
Yeah, so that's a very, very important part of this, so I'd add that to the mix.
Thank you. So with that, we're going to turn it over to public comment. Again, if you have not filled out a public comment card, please do so now. And we are going to do two minutes per speaker. And again, thank you all for being here. It's just refreshing to get the input from the community that was the whole game plan moving forward and hearing from the community, your concerns, your comments, as we continue to consider and weigh in on this bond as we move forward. So with that, if I can bring up George Wolfberg, followed by Sharon Cummins. Sharon will be followed by Christopher McKinnon. If you three can please come to the mic, I'd appreciate it. And you'll have two minutes each. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out here.
Thank you.
Actually, the traffic is reversed, so you have good traffic coming this way. Seriously.
Yeah, I came from the harbor. It was quick for me.
The bad traffic is going away.
Away, right.
Because Santa Monica primarily has more jobs than housing, and they have no plan to fix that. So it's a reverse commute. Not like the good old days. Anyway, I don't even know where to start. First of all, thank you for coming. Second, I think one thing I did listen to, part of your hearing downtown, I heard Eric Bruins from the LA CBC made a nice presentation. You know, bicycles are important, and you need to consider them. I'm from Santa Monica Canyon. I'm the president emeritus of the Santa Monica Canyon Civic Association. We have not taken a vote on anything, so I'm speaking for myself. I'm also on the Palisades Community Council at-large, elected rep, not speaking for them either. And just listening here, it sounds like there's some ideas that have come up for different ways of funding. I think maybe one thing you need to look at is cracking that gas tax, which requires initiatives in Washington, D.C. And I think, you know, you should look everywhere to try to find sources of this funding. The streets are horrible, the ones that are failed. And they, you know, if you go on Pico Boulevard here, from Sepulveda to Satel, that is, you know, it's a really busy street. It's a failed street. You have to drive that to appreciate it. And I think, you know, Nazaria, those guys, they're fabulous. They do so much with so little that, I mean, you're lucky to have them. They're just terrific. So bicycles, also sidewalks is an issue in our canyon. People walk in the street, and you say, well, why are they walking in the street? And then you look at the sidewalks. Well, these are no sidewalks, or the sidewalks are, they're, you know, they're horrible. We used to have a fifty-fifty program where people could, which I did personally. You put up half the money, the city puts up the other half, and you get your sidewalks fixed in front of your house. I think that's one of the ways that you can leverage interested citizens with the city funding to fix the sidewalks. So I'd say bring that back.
Thank you so much, sir. Christopher McKinnon?
Sharon had to leave, so I'm Christopher McKinnon.
Okay, thank you.
Sharon left.
Sharon took off, okay.
Yes. She is concerned, but she had another meeting to go to.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you for being here and not having me drive downtown to speak, but I will when I have to. I'm a property owner. I live on a double F failed street in a residential neighborhood in Mervis. And it's a hundred-year-old development. Our street hasn't been repaved since nineteen fifty-five, so we're sixty years in. And valuing seven fifty a year for my car, then I must be in a minus number worth of a vehicle. Little note to the property owners is that the curb and gutter is actually property owner responsibility. So in my twelve-year odyssey with street services, and the former department head finally told us that he wasn't going to reconstruct our street until the property owners fix the curb and gutter up to modern standards. It's a hundred-year-old development. So deterioration of the curb and gutter is almost complete in some areas, and some people have fixed it, but not with permits and some with permits. But, so what I wanted to point out is when you speak about street reconstruction, if this bond is going to pass, then you should also include the curb and gutter. Otherwise, you're not going to be able to reconstruct the street until the homeowners or property owners pay for it. So it may be too late for me and my neighbors because right now, in the city attorney's office, we're coming out with an assessment vote, which will be coming up. And so either Councilman Rosenthal or Councilmember-elect Bonin is going to bring to the council our assessment district for about a million dollars. So after that comes to us, we're going to have to vote. And it's like a hundred, a hundred and fifty property owners. So we're going to be in the same situation. If that vote doesn't pass, we're at square one. If this bond doesn't pass, you're going to be at square one. So you're going to have to come up with Plan B or C. And taxpayers are obviously proven that they want no more taxes, so it is a large quandary. So I would ask that also, if you bring the bond issue, that the list of streets be included, and at least you'll get those people voting yes.
Right. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Reza Akif, Jim Horowitz, Ryan Snyder, please come up to the mic.
Good evening.
Good evening. Reza Akka from the Palisades. I've, you know, I thank my councilmember-elect for speaking here today on behalf of his community. That's really important for us. There are a lot of things that I have questions about in this proposition, and mainly, they stem from three areas. Number one, government responsibility. Number two, personal responsibility. And number three, the future. The first one, government has not been responsible. You have failed. I'm sorry, but you have. Amalfi Drive gets paved by the city of Los Angeles, and then a year later, Department of Water and Power decides to tear it apart and put in a pipe? My street, Allenford, recently was slurry sealed two weeks ago, two years ago. What does AT&amp;T Wireless get to do? Tear it apart. So how is this going to work, government? How are you going to set up mitigating factors to prevent that from happening? Number two, personal responsibility. You allow your contractors, your independent contractors, and I represent private contractors, we have to go through hoops and ladders to do construction in this city, and we're happy to do it. Yet somehow, the contractors that work for the city of Los Angeles have to work with a margin of just good faith, the honor system, because they don't have enough city employees to come out and do street use inspections to find out what's going to happen on those streets that when they don't do a good job, when they tear up our gutters that are just okay, and when they push down our trees and they break our branches. And number three, the future. Now, the gentleman made a great point about pushing out a list of the properties that are available out there for the D Street. I would do that. I would let people know what streets are going to be targeted and where their money's going to go. Because quite frankly, I don't trust you. I don't. I don't trust you to spend my money properly, and I know I'm going to be paying the lion's share in property taxes.
Thank you. Jim Horowitz, followed by Ryan Snyder.
Thank you, and nice of you to be here. I've been working for eight years, almost eight years, with Councilman Rosenthal. And most of my weekends, I would go out into the district to follow up on calls that were made about problems with sidewalks, trees, and the streets. And my observations are as follows. The worst streets fall, the least of the worst is with the potholes. They can be repaired by asphalt repair. The repair is done by the departments when they, when they dig in to put in new pipes or whatever. They could do a better job. They could come out quicker and make sure that the, that the street is more level, that it hasn't either dropped or it doesn't have a big hill. They could do a better job. But the worst of all is because of the ficus trees that were put in years ago. Both the sidewalk and the streets are affected. And so even though we fixed a lot of the sidewalks with the fifty-fifty program and a few other things, and they resurface the street and they do cut the roots, that's not going to last forever. In a few years, it's going to all start happening again. I believe that the best move that you could make, and we certainly know about having three or four years of construction going on in our backyard here on the 405, I believe that if you divided the city up into five or six or seven areas, and each year, you went in and took out the ficus trees that are causing the problem, and then repair the street to the best of your ability temporarily, and then the next year, actually resurface it, and then do that in each district till you, maybe six or seven years, you'd have the whole city taken care of. But the ficus trees are really the worst enemy of, of street service right now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ryan Snyder?
Hello, thank you. My name is Ryan Snyder. I live in a condo on Wilshire Boulevard in Westwood, and I'm a member of the Homeowners Association Board. I'm also a transportation planner, and I recently produced a street design manual. So this issue is near my heart.
Oh, great.
I have mixed feelings about this proposal, and I just kind of wanted to share the various feelings I've got. I mean, as a planner, ideally, I think that our streets and our transportation systems ought to be paid for out of user fees, higher gasoline taxes, vehicle miles traveled fees, and the like. I would also like, agree with the new councilmember Bonin, that things like the 405 widening is not a good use of our transportation money. I'd like to see some of that, you know, on a countywide level, our money spent a little differently. But that said, we don't have a lot of good choices. And there's no perfect way of taxing ourselves. I mean, anything we do is going to present problems one way or the other, and it's not a perfect situation. If we let our streets go further, they get more expensive to repair. It's penny wise and pound foolish not to repair the streets. We're going to have to pay for it one way or the other. So given that I feel that generally best way to pay for it would be user fees, I'm willing to compromise on that if you design, if you define sort of the streets as, in broader terms, as including all users, like bicyclists, like transit users, and including the sidewalks. The sidewalks really are part of the streets, and they're in bad need of repair. And so if you were to include sidewalks, as well as pedestrian improvements, bike improvements, transit improvements, it would be a slam dunk for me to vote for. And I'd be willing to pay higher property taxes in order to get that. And I think, I think most important for you, I think there's a lot of other voters out there who would also be more inclined to vote for this if you included those, those things in with it.
Thank you, sir. Eric Weinstein, Nancy Friedman, and last speaker, Jay Ross. Eric here? No. Nancy Friedman. Nancy, good evening. Thanks for being here.
Nice to see you here instead of downtown. But thank you very much for making the effort. I think this is a very worthy thing, and I'm interested in it. I've had some conversation, and what I have to say is not, you know, terribly different. But I wanted to know if you've studied other cities and what they've done with their streets. You have. Have you studied, like, successful cities?
Yeah, San Francisco did a bond.
Okay. Because I think a lot of them are doing good things, and I think it always works, you know, not to reinvent the wheel, so, a pun. I also think differently. I'm not so sure that special interest groups should be in this. I know every time I mention this to people, they say, well, is there going to be pork? Like, you know, are the tree trimmers want to get into it? And are the bicyclers going to want to get into it? Well, bicyclers and cars use the streets, so I can understand that. But I'm not so sure we have to designate groups. They can figure it out themselves. I think if you keep it clean, and it's just sidewalks and streets, everybody knows who that's servicing. So that would just be one suggestion. And then the quality of the street repair. Are there companies in our city that we can use and use their products and use labor in our city so that this becomes our city as opposed to bringing people in?
Absolutely.
And is there federal money? No?
That's the whole problem with the, our funds are pretty much...
Okay, those are my questions.
Pleaded.
Thank you for doing this, and keep going with it.
Thank you, ma'am. Jay Ross, followed by Lillian Laskin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for coming out to the West Side and doing it after work, so we can attend. We are very interested, and we can't get downtown during the day off. And I support a lot of what a lot of people said, and I support some sort of tax fee. I'm a renter. When property taxes go up, my rent's going to go up. So this just isn't, you know, the homeowners are getting ram-rodded. Also, us renters are going to pay more. I'm fine with that. I see it as the investment. If I pay a hundred and twenty dollars more a year and I save two hundred in car repairs, if I don't have a crash and miss hours at work. So there is public support for a tax, a bond, or whatever. Ideally, in terms of the financial structure, I'm a little naive, but it seems like what would be ideal is if we were creating a rainy day fund and creating reserves over the next five, ten years. I know we'd have to wait longer. But maybe you can ask your finance people. When you do a bond, about fifty percent of the cash you pay is actually interest and not for asphalt, or something like that. It's like your mortgage. Half of your mortgage is not for the house, it's for interest. So that's why I'm wary of a bond. I would love, like Ryan, I'd love to see a gas tax, a user tax. I'd prefer it not to be on homeowners and renters, because the property tax, it also hurts the renters and the poor people, because the poor people don't have cars as much, and they bike more and ride the bus more. So they're not destroying the roads as much. So I'd encourage you to find a sales tax. If you have to go to the county to change legislation or the state, you know, I'd encourage you to do that. We would support you. Do I have anything else? I support the complete streets. We have the bike plan going on, and this would be a great opportunity to reslurry and stripe for the bike lanes, because there may not be money for that. And the only cheap shot I'll take it, you guys, is if it does go to a bond and it goes out to the big investment banks, I'd ask you guys to refrain from taking contributions from investment banks, Goldman Sachs, J.P. Morgan. Obviously, they give, give contributions for a reason. Doesn't mean you guys would be swayed. And also be wary of guys like Alfredo Villalobos, who has to be an agent for the Calpers people. And the Calpers people ended up saying, you don't need to hire this guy. Just come to us if you want to bid on our business. So I'd encourage you to do that.
Thank you, sir. Lillian Laskin, and I believe another card came in, Cesar Diaz. Lillian, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Glad you were able to make it over on this side of town. I think we all have a lot more participation when we have meetings that are at these times and closer to where people live. I'm wary of a bond tax, because again, the bankers are going to get involved. We're going to pay a lot of interest. I think people are pretty sick of that. I think the user fees are a better way to go. And to have different fees for the commercial, I really think the alleys have to be involved here. People are talking about streets and sidewalks. The alleys are falling apart. And a lot of businesses are not fixing the alleys, because they figure the city's going to do it. The city's not doing it. So I think you include alleys, as well as sidewalks and streets, and you make sure that... So I think you include alleys, as well as sidewalks and streets, and you make sure that you do a good promotional, educational program, so people can get on board. And I don't think a bond is going to go. I think you're going to waste your time. I think a user tax would be better, and I think different fees for different users would be a great thing, and have a plan, so it's not just a general, but you're specific, and people know what to look forward to. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. And Cesar Diaz.
Hi, my name's Cesar Diaz. Thank you, councilmembers, for coming out to the West Side. Just a couple of comments. I guess the main thing is people's sensitivity will be on the lack of transparency. So if, when going through this process, you know, the costs are definitely there in terms of what it will cost to fix a street, but I think letting people know what streets are going to be fixed, the ratings of the streets, it'll take a lot of work to do that, but I think it'll give people the confidence they need to, in order to see what's going to play out. And the other part of it is too, is the how of it, is the coordination that will take place. I encourage you guys to look at the infrastructure below the streets. That's where a lot of the wear and tear is going to come out. When, once you repave a street, I think somebody mentioned that, you know, someone paves a street and then utilities come in and mess it up again. So I think having that game plan ahead of time over the 10 years and figuring out, how do you coordinate what major infrastructures that DWP has to do as part of their work and other services, so that you don't get into situations where the money got spent and then, you know, a little bit afterwards, all of a sudden, the street got ripped up again. I think looking at that coordination with all the different departments of the city will be a key, and just laying it out to the folks that we're going to look at doing that, might encourage everybody to really look at this, and just looking at other innovative financing structures that other cities are doing. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Now, Nazario, you can gain access to, you can pull up your, see if your street is in A, B, or C, D, or F condition on the website, right?
That is correct, councilmember. If you go to bss.lacity.org, that's our main page. At the bottom of our webpage, there's an icon for neighborhood councils. You click on that icon, and then it'll take you to a new page where you see the whole map of the city of LA subdivided into the seven service areas. If you reside in West LA, you click on the West LA area, and then you'll get a listing of all the neighborhood councils within that, within that area. You click on your neighborhood council, and then you get a map with all the streets within your neighborhood council rated green, yellow, or red. And the red, of course, are the streets that require reconstruction.
Good. Thank you. We have a public comment? Do you want to-
Could you just repeat the website a little bit slower?
Yes.
BSS dot-
BSS?
BSS.
Bureau of Street Services.
Org.
In fact, I'm going to direct my communications director, let's put a link on our website to that, to that link on the BSS.
We've got one on mine as well.
Fantastic. I also want to recognize some of members from the UCLA family who are here, and it was, as we know, Councilmember Englander and I, and our staff, and the CAO, CLA's office, met with both Professor Leamer and Nick Oldberg, and really has put out this incredible white paper that's also online as well for your information. And in our first meeting at City Hall, they had just a comprehensive report on "Now's the Time to Borrow" and made a great presentation on the feasibility of this bond, and the fact that the interest rates are 40-year low is "Now's the Time to Borrow." So Felicia, thanks so much, and your partner for being here and representing the UCLA family. So with that, so you know their public comment cards, I'd like to thank you all for being here and being a part of the process. The one thing that Mr. Englander and I and my colleagues on this committee said that we need to have a transparent process in moving forward, this is a $3 billion project. Everything is on the table. What's not on the table is sitting in our hands and doing nothing. So I want to commend each and every one of you for being here. I want to thank the city staff and family, city family for being here, for your presentation. Michael, with this, I'm going to hold both of these items to our next committee meeting, which is scheduled for Thursday, April 25. And audio of this meeting will be posted on the lacity.org website. And with that, this special Public Works Committee meeting is now adjourned. Thank you so much.